And welcome to the October 27, 2014 regular meeting of the Waterloo Community School District Board of Education. I hereby call the meeting to order. Now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will read the school district's mission statement. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community. And so now we'll get into the heart of our agenda, which tonight is fairly lighter than typical. But the first item we have on the agenda is the student handbooks. This is for information only. And I don't know if we have those to...
They're in my office.
Pass out. Okay, we will get those passed out here as well. Here shortly. And again, this is just for information only. In handbooks, are they given to every student?
Yes.
That, okay, but they're just the difference. And there was some discussion, I think beforehand, about, is it high schools and...
The schedules.
Okay, yeah.
Getting the schedules in there, and I'll check on that to see if that... I'll check on that.
Gotcha.
And I think the comment was that this year they didn't have the schedules in there, and they're just a lot more useful if they have the schedule in there. So we need to check on that.
Gotcha. And we're getting those passed out for, is it east and west?
For the next year.
This... I... That's a great question. These are this year's. But I was thinking that usually they come to you prior to that time, so... Look at that and see.
Okay, and there's not as much about the actual activities for each school?
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
I will definitely take that feedback back.
We need one more. Oh, okay, we got it.
Got it, yeah.
So it's probably, it's too late to get the schedule in this year, it looks like.
Probably, but we can certainly take that for 2014.
Daily schedule?
The athletic events on the calendar.
The schedule, like where the days off are.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
But I think you were talking about...
But not on the actual calendar.
In previous years, the book would, each calendar day would have...
What, who was playing?
Yes, not only sports events, but musical calendar events and lots of things.
Generally, those are planned before the school year starts, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. Usually those are, yeah, they're definitely solidified by spring. I just have a question. Mike, do you remember, were they in the daily pieces?
Yeah, it was just like this.
Or was there, okay, right in there?
Yeah.
And it would say like varsity, junior varsity, boys basketball, so on and so on.
Yep. It's been a while since I've been at the building level, and I cannot remember what that looks like, so I'll find out.
I should have brought, I had one from last year.
Oh, yeah.
I could have brought with me.
Well, I'm sure we have one upstairs too, so I will definitely look at that. Sorry, I'm holding these up.
Oh, no, don't worry about it.
I didn't realize those were sitting there waiting.
Any further questions or discussions on this?
Any other feedback you want me to take back?
Their feedback, yeah.
Cora's not, um, sorry, she's not here tonight.
Okay, oh, no problem. Okay, again, moving on to the information from individuals and delegations. And we've got just a few people in the audience. Would you like to speak to the board? This is a time when people can speak to the board. Okay, gotcha. And please, I'll just read kind of this introduction, and then you can go up to the microphone up there and just make sure the green light's on. But this is a time where anybody who wants to can address the board about any matter. There are just a few qualifications, so we'd ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And when you get close to that point, with 30 seconds remaining, Mrs. Arndorf will hold up a yellow card and then a red card when you get to three minutes. And we just ask that you keep your comments respectful and constructive. And the only thing we would ask that you not talk about are personnel matters, because those have to be kept confidential and handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. But at this time, I'd invite anybody to step forward. If you could just start with your name and your address.
My name is Paul Stinson Senior. It's Paul Stinson Junior right there. And my address, 535 Hope Avenue here in Waterloo. And my concern is the starting time for Cunningham School. We have 11, we have 11 primary schools in this district, and Cunningham is the only one that starts at 8 o'clock in the morning. And I talked with the principal, Mr. Sattler, about, you know, this situation. And he said that his teachers have been complaining that his, their students are, you know, toward the end of the day, they run out of fuel. And I'm thinking this is because, you know, all the other 10 schools are getting their decent sleep, you know. The other, the other students are being jarred out of their sleep already, you know. But at Cunningham, they're getting super jarred out of their sleep, you know, an hour earlier than all the other schools. And sleep is very important. You know, it rejuvenates the body, it cleanses the brain, rejuvenates the brain, and releases growth hormones. That's not super important for old people like me, but for kids, you know, that prime sleeping time is necessary so I can get the full benefit of getting a nice sleep. And so, and, you know, I don't know why they picked Cunningham to inflict this stuff on, you know, what about the other schools? Why, who chose Cunningham to have this early start time in the first place? This needs to be fixed. And then also East High School, you go to a football game, there aren't very many big guys out there. You go to wrestling, I went to a wrestling meet last year, and of the last four weights, four heavier weights, I think they had three guys, not a single heavyweight. I don't know if this is affected by this lack of sleep thing, or just, you know, I'm sure that's part of the problem. And I appreciate this being straightened out. You know, it also affects the parents, you know. Okay, early starting time, you know, kids, you can put them to bed at 9 o'clock or 8:30, but they're gonna, they're not gonna fall asleep till about 9, 9:30. And then, so you gotta jar them up while the other guys, the other guys get all this juicy sleep. And I would like to have this straightened out as quickly as we can do it. Guess that's all I have to say. But just remember, sleeping cleanses the brain and releases growth hormones, and our kids, all kids need that. It should be, it should be a natural rule that no elementary school starts until 9 o'clock. All right, thank you for your time.
Right, thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay. If not, and moving on, I'll, I guess at this time I'll just ask Dr. Lindeman if she could comment on the, do you know on the history of the start time?
Yeah, I would just address a little bit of that. I don't know about the original start, and I don't know if Dr. Smith could share a little bit more. I do, what I could offer is the part that I know about. In the last year, when we looked at the calendar, it was on the continuous calendar, and we looked to make it more consistent with the other buildings. One of the things that we looked at not only was the continuous calendar, the start time, but we also looked at the, and the start day, like in August or in July. Another thing that we looked at was the start time, because we recognized that it was the only building that was starting at 7:45 versus 8:45, I think is when the, or I think the kids have to start school at 7:50 versus 8:50 like the other buildings. And at that time, I probably received, oh, I would say, I wouldn't be too far off if I said 30 to 40 parents who asked, and in some cases begged, us to not move the start time. And they said, if we're moving the calendar, that's enough of a change at one time, could we at least keep the early start time and not look at that? And so at that point in time, I think it was just a consideration that we would, would, you know, we were making one start time, so we said we would change the calendar at that point in time to make it more consistent. But then after that, we would look at it at the end of the year or two and maybe do a survey with parents. We've done multiple surveys with families, with parents throughout the years. I can think of at least two times that we've surveyed parents on the calendar, the start date. But I'm not sure that we've surveyed them on the time of the day that that starts. And I think that's probably a really wise decision to look at that. We did promise last spring that we would, we would look at the start time, but we just promised we wouldn't look at it right then, because there were a lot of people who said that's just too much change at one time. So I think your, I think your point is well made, and I think it probably fits right into what we had kind of promised all along that we would do. So I appreciate your comments.
Thank you. And a lot of people are unaware of the fact of the growth hormones that it cleanses the brain, et cetera. A lot of people don't know that.
Yeah.
So they don't have too much of a reason to complain. Also, that time of morning, that's another train dread. The other, you go down Forest Street, when it's supposed to be time to go to Cunningham, people gotta drive around because, you know, certain hours, all the other schools can drive through there. Some kids gotta, and then we, there's been at least two cases that I know of, since I've lived in Waterloo, where black kids have lost their limbs, torrid through trains to get to school, get to school. That's at least fifth and sixth graders living on the other side of the tracks, you know. They might say, oh, I could get through this train, you know, another accident. Don't need that kind of stuff. You need to be at the train dread, until they change the time, you know, like commentary, run through trains, drive around trains and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which tonight only consists of three items, and one of which I foresee, the personnel appointments and adjustments. I'll ask for that to be removed. So if there's one more, we can just take them, I guess, one by one. But tonight, the consent agenda consists of the minutes of our last regular board meeting, and then from October 13th, and then a special board meeting from October 20th. I believe that's the expulsion hearing, the special board meeting. Then personnel appointments and adjustments since our last board meeting, and then finally bills due and payable since our last board meeting.
Mr. President, do you mean to pull D?
No, I'm sorry, I said C. I meant D, and I did circle C. Excuse me, you're right. So I'll ask that D be removed, the bills due and payable.
And he said C, and I circled D.
Yes. Oh, perfect. Are there any items that board members wish to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay, well then, hearing none, we will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item D, bills due and payable.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to exhibit D. This is on page nine. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the bills due and payable, and the bills paid between board meetings. Put that motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. And just before discussion starts, all abstain from voting on this, because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills. Any questions or discussions on this? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair abstains, motion carried. And that takes us to exhibit E. It's on page 19. And this is the recommended motion on our special education budget and a request for allowable growth that would go to the state school budget review committee. This is, again, exhibit E on page 19. We'll get this motion on the table, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Lindeman or Mr. Coff, Mr. Cofflin after that. Recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the finance committee and approve the request to the school budget review committee for allowable growth and supplemental aid payment for the negative special education balance of $427,966 for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved.
Thank you, in a second?
Second.
Thank you. In discussion. And Mr. Cofflin, I turned it over to you just for some background information on this.
Okay, special education, as you remember, we have gone through a little bit of a roller coaster in the last four or five years. As the, as the country saw the economic decline and Governor Culver at the time cut state aid by 10%, we reacted and cut back on special ed as well. Well, by the end of the year, we found out they didn't want us to address special ed, and they would take it out of our general expenses for state aid. So we kind of underspent for a couple of years. And as a result of the strategic plan and the focus on student achievement, the special ed staff ramped up, the teaching, instructional coaches, para support, all of the aspects that went along, I've got that on the bullet points on the front, supplemental curriculum materials, increase in staffing, instructional coaching, and professional development. So then we kind of went a little bit the other way. In the, in the other point that made that happen was we were not getting increases in revenue. So we were seeing expenditures then increase because of these reasons, and revenues were not. So we went a little bit on the other side and had a ending balance of a negative 1.5 million a couple of years ago. And in relation, you have to remember that this is about a $30 million budget. So it is extensive. Well, in the next paragraph, you can see too that this was happening all over the state. In 10, 11, all of the districts as a whole went $33 million over. Their revenue in 11, 12, they went $52 million over. And in 12, 13, they went almost $68 million over, which has resulted in the governor's attention and the legislature looking at, along with the DE, looking at special ed, saying, is it just that we're underfunding? Is it that we are spending money where we shouldn't be? And all of those things have now been in a study for, which are now enacted in 15, as we look at expenditures and we are looking at them more critically as to how they fit. So that's an issue going on all over the state. It was not just Waterloo's issue. So it really was an issue of a couple of years of low revenues and expenditures continuing to increase, and the emphasis on student achievement and supporting that. Well, a year ago, when we went through this and were a million five over, there was a lot of attention given to it, the budgeting, looking at all of our different categories. And there was quite a few changes made. There were some positions that were frozen, and a lot of effort put forth through the human resources part of special ed. And as a result of the adjustments at the end of 14, we reduced that deficit by over $1 million to 427. We were shooting for a balanced budget. We knew that was going to be a stretch to make up that much difference in one year, but they did accomplish the majority of it. So we were satisfied with that as looking at it from the administrative part. We have looked at a couple of areas that are still in need of more study and more attention. One of the things that I had mentioned in here, two of the areas that really had an impact on that was Medicaid reimbursements that we get, that, that students qualify for Medicaid services and getting a reimbursement for that. And we expected that to be a little higher than what we had this year to offset some of that. And we are on track of increasing it, and we are expecting about $500,000 more next year, or in 15, than we did in 14. So that will help our situation as well as the revenues themselves. Just from the student count, went up 433,000. With, and with the other revenues, we're expecting 1.6 million more in revenue. We are going to go up about 950,000 in expenditures, but that should get us into a positive ending balance category for the end of 15. So I just wanted to let you know that we are on track of correcting this from our low point at the end of 13, and have done a lot of work on this. But part of the whole process with the school budget review committee is that when we do go over, we can apply for our allowable growth to be rewarded back, because when we overspend the special ed revenues, we're really spending general fund money. And this does not give us money back. It just gives us our authority back to be able to keep the general fund healthy. And it is a choice in the spring of whether the district would choose to back that with cash reserve levy. And that will be a decision later as we would get into the spring and look at the published budget for 15, 16. It's hard to say that year that far in advance, but... So this is an approval by the board, a recommendation for an approval by the board to request this allowable growth be put back into our budget so that we, the general fund is not penalized by the overage of the special ed.
Any comments or questions?
No. Michael, I was just gonna ask if you would talk a little bit about River Hills and any impact that would have on overspending or underspending in 14?
In 14...
Or 15, sorry, in this year, 15?
Actually, we were billed under the new laws in 14.
Okay.
And what has happened over the last couple of years of all the study with this is our, as they are looking at how money is spent on special education, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had Castle Hill. And we had signed contracts with all of the other schools that came in, and we had to treat that as our school, because AEA was not an entity, a taxing entity within the district. That was our school, not theirs. So we had to basically reshuffle all the money to come through us. And if you're looking at this in detail, in the middle column, tuition in receipts from one year to the next, from 12 to 13 went up about $1 million, and then down to 250,000. Well, that was a direct result of, instead of just giving AEA the money for our students, we had to bill everybody, every student in Castle Hill like they were ours. And we had to report that as all tuition in. Well, now we dropped off of that. And River Hills, instead of having to continue under that scenario, the new emphasis on the, from the DE on special ed is now saying, yes, you can divide that money out. And it doesn't all have to go through Cedar Falls now. And they are actually breaking out things that used to come through tuition, such as transportation and the custodial and operations of that building that all used to come through tuition. Now it is separated out, and they're going to bill us for that, that we have to pay for in our general fund. So it is more accurate, but it's a change. So when you look at how one year relates to the next, we've gone through about three levels of change in the last three years. So as we analyze all of those different components, we have to make the adjustments. So we try to still hit a balanced budget in special ed.
And just to make clear, when we're talking about balancing the budget within special ed, I guess indirectly that affects the bottom line. It goes into affecting the bottom line for the whole district.
It does not, yeah.
But in the past, when, if we'd overspent in special ed, that was made up for in general funds, the bottom line was still the same. It's just we had to take more money out of general.
It doesn't raise or lower our expenditures. It doesn't raise or lower our final number on the CAR numbers that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. All it does is shift the money from special ed funding to general funding and making sure those things are reported in the right category. So when we are over, over in special ed, either we get the authority back by this action, or that 420,000 just comes out of the general fund, and it's never recovered.
Got it, yeah.
So it looks like, I mean, it looks like excellent progress from 1.5 million deficit to 400,000 to, I think I'm hearing next year, anticipated to be no deficit.
Projections are 250 positive.
Okay.
With the numbers I gave you.
All right. Now, is that pure, or is some of it cost shifting? For Castle Hill, for example, in the past, I have an impression it's transportation was paid under the, we were charged that, and that was paid under the...
Tuition.
The special education budget.
Correct.
Is that true today, or are we absorbing that?
Now, transportation will stay with special ed, because these are all Level III special ed students that would need, would have an IEP of transportation. So that would still qualify under special ed. What we are paying for separately is, they're going to actually charge us rent for the building, part of the operations of heating it, the custodial, some of the administrative staff. Because special ed rules only allow for so many administrative staff per number of students. And if they choose to do more based on their need, that, one thing that I haven't mentioned is, there is now a board of all the superintendents in the district that are going to come together and basically approve the operations of River Hills. So it's not an issue that AEA can just function as its own entity and just add as many people and staff as they so chose.
Okay.
Now it's up to the review of the superintendents of all the districts in 267 that can come in and critique and scrutinize the budget that they're using, that it's reasonable and everybody can live with. So there is an oversight to it now.
Well, that's true of River Hills, but Castle Hill...
Castle Hill was dissolved a year ago.
But, but, so, so the current transportation cost for all the students that were at Castle Hill is now in our general budget, not in the special education budget, right?
No, they are still identified out of our regular transportation to be allocated as a cost to special ed.
Okay, so it is...
Transfer back. Transfers back out of special ed.
Well, Mike, Michael, I wanted to thank you and all your staff to reduce it by this much. That's had to be a lot of hard work and...
Well, it was. I mean, we got together as several of the departments with special ed and went through all of their staffing protocol of how they align staff to the buildings and the needs, and worked through it from that level, and then with the intent of trying to get to a balanced budget. So we got quite a long ways on the process, so we were happy with that.
So was there a significant amount of savings, the absorption of the Castle Hill students internally, or...
There was, there definitely was savings to that as we looked at what we'd been spending per child, been getting billed by Castle Hill per child. We haven't gone in and tried to actually do a...
Okay.
A reality...
But that was a little bit...
Dollar amount.
Little bit out of control, wasn't it?
Well, that was part of the issue where I talked about having the board of superintendents where... where before, if they wanted to hire 10 more aides, paras, they would do that without any approval from anyone and just pass, pass it on to us. So this way it just gives a, an oversight board that looks at all of that.
Right. And really, our decision-making, the way it used to be, our input was really just given when we decided whether that was correct placement for a child. So that's really the only say we had. And now we'll not only have to say whether it's the right placement, but also in what that facility looks like and whatever. So it's kind of a double, it gives us a little more authority, I guess, and not just budget authority, but it gives us a little more authority in how the programming looks and certainly the budget oversight.
Michael, I know that one of the inconsistencies was that, like the billing procedures and the...
Medicaid and the, you know, what was billed where? Have we got a really good handle on that now? Yeah, it was about a three-year process of Larry Martin and Angela Montgomery working with AEA on all of those kids that did qualify for Medicaid services. And I will say that as they got into it, Larry was very pleased that AEA bought into the process and it wasn't an issue anymore. They were trying to serve that need as well. So that came a long way in the last couple of years as well. Because if you look at the numbers just on here in the last three years, a couple of years ago, we got 900,000, then it went to 1.3 and now it's over 1.5. And we're projecting it's going to be over 2 million this year. So it gets to be a lot of dollars.
Michael, I had a question about Level 1, Level 2, and Level 3 on the top of your report. It seems like the amount allocated per student is about the same. I guess I was under the impression it increases quite a bit, or is that not really reflected in these numbers?
What's reflected in those numbers is the weightings of, a Level 1 is 1.68, a Level 2 is 2.52, and then a Level 3 is...
3.67.
3.68.
6, 7.
6, 7, okay. So...
That's the weighted then, is that that's referring...
But you have the regular, which is just that number times 1, times the cost per pupil at the top, and then you have the weighting that's added, the .7 or the .15. So that's the regular cost and the weighted cost added together. And you can see that those numbers have shifted a little bit from the levels, but really not a whole lot.
Okay, that explains it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Michael. Any further questions or discussion? But again, it does look positive. I know it's been a lot of work over the last couple of years, but things seem to be moving in the right direction in a much more understandable manner, I guess, too, and that helps as well. Thank you. If there's nothing further than entertain, or actually, I'm sorry, we've got the motion on the floor. We'll vote on the motion. Okay, all those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to the last agenda item on our board agenda, and that is approval of a revision to a board policy for gifts to employees. It's policy number 402.8, and this is up for second reading. And again, it went before us two weeks ago for first reading, and then also before that went through the Policy Committee, of which Tara Thomas chairs, and she is here now to see if there are any questions. This was just a revision regarding, kind of cleaning up some language that was in there and then also adding some language regarding tax-free matters. Any questions on this? I don't think there have been any changes since the last... Okay. All right, well, if there's nothing further, we'll get the motion on the floor. And the recommended motion is that the board approve the policy gifts to employees, number 402.8. Thank you, a second? Okay, thank you. And further discussion? Are any of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to the end of our action items. It is a pretty light agenda here. But the next item we have is the superintendent's report from Dr. Lindeman.
Well, I just really want to use my time for, for one thing, and that's just really to invite the community to our upcoming town hall meetings. And Tara has done, Tara and her staff has done an amazing job of making sure people are aware of the dates. It's, she's had me busy doing all kinds of things, commercials and videos and all kinds of things to make sure that parents know. We sent home flyers with the parents during conferences last week, so hopefully all of the parents have all of the dates, and I will just repeat them one more time. Next week, we get started on the 6th, which is Thursday night, so it's the 6th and the 8th, and both of those are right here in this, in this room. And then we have, the next week, it's the 11th and 12th, and then the following week, the 17th. So there are five of them. And we just encourage community and staff and anybody who wants to be part of that conversation to come and listen and give their input. And at the end, we're actually gonna have a formal way for people to give their input. So we're, you know, I think that's a really great idea. We are in, behind the scenes, doing a lot of things. We've finished the, a subgroup of the board has been interviewing architects and making sure that we are being very diligent in, or just being good stewards of the dollars that we are, we have. And another thing that's going to come out, I would, I would say that anybody, staff, parents, community should look at our district website. If you click on the district website, right on the front page, there's a little launch of section on high school reform. And if, if people click on that, it's just gonna be growing and, and we're, it's, it's about to explode with information here within the next week because we have a, an overview video that is eight and a half minutes. It's, it's, you know, I guess it's kind of long but, but short compared to the one-hour meetings. So if by chance, we of course want people to come, but if people couldn't come and they wanted an overview of what the meeting was about, we would definitely recommend that people click on that video, watch it from the comfort of their home, and then come to the meeting anyway. We'd love that. So that, that video will be there. Another thing that should be out by next week is a fairly comprehensive FAQ, frequently asked questions. And again, Tara's taking amazingly, I actually was in Kansas City over the weekend and I, for five hours, I worked with the computer on my lap and sent it to Tara when I got there and said, here, you know, here's the draft of where we're going. So I think we are getting really close on looking at the questions that we're hearing come up and getting really good answers for people. And I thought of three more questions today that I want to add to that, so it's gonna be a growing list. So if people have questions, I would really encourage them to let us know because we want, we've committed to being as transparent as possible, so we want to answer your questions. We will do everything we can to do that. And my final comment is that we are working really hard to get to the staff and to make sure that all staff members are very aware of what's going on. I had the privilege of meeting with East and Expo High Schools last week, and it went really great and staff members stayed, you know, for an hour afterwards just to ask a lot of questions, and we really appreciated that. And I'm gonna have the opportunity to meet with Central tomorrow and West on Wednesday. And so just getting a lot of, a lot of good feedback and, and I, I'm really encouraged because the, the comments are very positive and people like the direction that we're going and, but they're giving us feedback that actually makes it better. So that's, that's really all I'm gonna say. I'm just gonna have the one item tonight, which is a big one.
Oh, it is. Thank you, Dr. Lindeman.
Do you have a location for the 11th, 12th, and 17th yet?
Well, goodness, we do. Yes, and I actually have it up in front of me. Tuesday, November 11th is at West High School. And the next night, which is Wednesday, November 12th, and that is at the Center for Performing Arts. And then Monday, the following Monday, November 7th is at East High School. So those are...
Wait, Waterloo Center for the Art, I call it the rec center still.
It's on the back of the...
Waterloo Center, yeah.
Yes.
Center for the Arts.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, it's listed on the back.
It's in that page yet, Lyle.
Yep, they are, they are in there, and I, hopefully people will know, you know, we just hope that they will come to one of those and certainly could come to all of them, but that they are a repeat. I mean, it's designed to give people's options. We know that not everybody wants to come on a, you know, on a Monday night because they have things, so they can pick one of the other nights. If they look at that schedule, they're gonna notice that there's a Monday option, a Tuesday option, a Wednesday option, a Thursday option, and a Saturday option. So it's really an attempt to be as flexible and meet the needs of families, so we hope people will come.
And, and we're very much in the feedback stage.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
Yet, I mean, what's being presented is probably a synthesis of everything, the 21st Century Task Force and others, the previous meetings we've had have kinda, you know, that's the themes and the messages that we've heard, so that's what's gonna be shared.
Right.
But it's still very much open to revision based on what probably parents, male, so...
Yeah, well said. I, in presenting to East High last week, we asked them to fill out a little feedback sheet and actually one of the secretaries compiled all of the comments, and great majority of them were, were very positive comments, but there were some suggestions of, I wonder if we could do this, or when you present it, make sure that you, you add this piece. And I think all total, it was like nine pages of comments, and that's just from probably 100 and, you know, maybe 150 staff members. So we anticipate we're gonna have a lot of feedback coming. So I appreciate Lyle adding that because it really is about getting feedback. We don't want to go forward unless people are really clear and have had a chance to give us, give us information. So thank you for adding that.
Well, I think it gives an opportunity for the public to come and dispel rumors or dispel things that they have heard, that, that we have set things or we are doing this or we are doing that, because that is the farthest thing from the truth that could ever be. So, I mean, the transparency of this has been unbelievable, I think, so I appreciate that.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Dr. Lindeman. And now information from board members. And I will start here with Angela Weekly.
I just didn't want to forget. Not being a parent, I, I am just been made aware of in the last week some of the very great tools that we have as parents. I've been able to attend conferences, which are an awesome tool for getting to build that partnership between the parents and, and then also the teachers and the administrators. So I know that conferences just passed, but as they're coming up, if you have an opportunity, please, as parents, it is really important that you're building those relationships. Another thing is, as I'm mentoring my now new middle schooler, we've had the opportunity to use Infinite Campus each week to see which assignments she's missing and try to help her get organized. Again, an awesome tool that you don't have to wait to conferences to make sure that you're on top of what it is that your child is working on or needs to work on. It's updated daily. I know there was something that was, when I met with her today, there was something that was updated 15 minutes before us meeting. So it's, it's updated. Some of the teachers use it better than others, but at the same time, it's a great tool to, again, be proactive as opposed to reactive. So that's all I, all I wanted to say.
Great point. Thank you, Angela. And Sue Flynn.
Well, and I wanted to reiterate what Jane said, too, that as a staff member and an employee of the district, please get your questions answered. We have so many opportunities that if you have questions or you have a suggestion, we want to hear it, but don't go tell people something unless you know the validity of it. And so I guess I would just encourage all staff to just be on top of this because this is a huge, huge thing for our district, and we need our staff to be on board with this. And if you have concerns, call Dr. Lindeman and tell her, and she will listen. So just encouraging that the staff really needs to be on board with this project, and I would encourage all community members, you know, if one of these doesn't work, call Dr. Lindeman's office and find out exactly if you're not computer savvy or if you'd like a written presentation, we could get you that. But just, this is a big thing for our students and our community, and I just, I just can't emphasize enough that we need to be educated. And we want to educate our kids, but this is something that we as adults need to be educated on.
And Sue, just to piggyback on what she was just saying, too, I just, I just remembered something. I should have said that if you click on the website, or I'll just say them right now, there are two ways that you can send your questions, two formal ways. One of them is to email them to a web address that is, it's taskforce@waterlousschools.org. Taskforce, all one word, at waterlousschools.org. And that's just a great way of, of giving feedback. And then we, of course, have, we still have our anonymous school talk hotline, and that is 433-2060, 319-433-2060. So email, phone, letter, phone call, we do want to hear from you. So we've tried to tweet, Facebook, whatever you, yes, send us information and send us, send us ideas, so make sure they had those numbers.
Thank you, Sue. And Shanley McNally. And Andrea Sparks.
Well, I recently visited Becker School, and I was introduced to their Leader in Me program that they have there, and there's some very enthusiastic teachers there, so. And I saw how they incorporate Leader in Me in the classroom. It's just not a separate entity. It filters into everything that they do at that school, so it looked very good. And that's all I have to say tonight.
Great. Thank you, Andrea. And Mike Kinsey.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. And Lauschmidt. Thank you. And now it's my turn. I usually don't have an announcement, but I do tonight. And I am, let me make clear, I'm not resigning, but we are 10 months away from the next school elections, just over 10 months away. And I, my term then will end, so just in 10 months and a week, I've decided I'm not gonna run for reelection. So two board terms will be enough for me. I have absolutely loved serving on the board. It's been a pleasure. One of the best parts is working with the people of the district, I think incredibly highly of the school board. It's a very caring and knowledgeable and hardworking board. I would say the same of the people of the district, the administrators that we work with, I continue to be impressed by and learn from. And almost everybody within the school district throughout our community that I run into is in it, you can just tell they're in it for the right reasons. So I'm very, very positive about the school district. And I've always said, as a school board member, you get to know the ins and outs of a school district, the good, the bad, and the ugly. But the more I know about the Waterloo Schools, the more I love it and the more confident I am that it's the right place for my kids to get the best education and preparation possible. So I've loved being on the school board. Now, it's odd to bring up not running for an election in 10 months, and I realize that. But the reason I'm bringing it up is because of the board, exactly, but the board president role. And so once I decided not to run again, and I want to say, there are three other board members in the same kind of class that I am, I hope all three of you run again, but I also hope none of you decide until you're ready, which may very well be many months from now. So I'm doing this very, very early. But as the board president, and that's kind of why I wanted to talk, as the board president, what I would like to do is the same thing Bernice Richard did for me. Bernice was the board president when I became vice president, and during her last year on the board, she decided not to run again. And, and she switched with me and became the vice president, which allowed me to kind of lean on her and get some, some kind of guidance getting into it. And so when I thought I wasn't going to be running again, I'm, my thought immediately went to kind of that transition planning. And so what I'd like to do is that same thing, is kind of switch roles if the board will have me. I don't mean to be presumptuous. It's up to a board vote. We have, the board votes, call it the organization of the board, votes for president and vice president. And so what I'd like to do is resign as president, and I'll be presumptuous enough to say I'd like to nominate Shanley McNally to serve as board president. I think she would be great in this role, and she's been vice president now for a while. But I think she'd do very, very well. I think Shanley is very intelligent, very hardworking, I think you've got a great way with people, and are very respectful and articulate as well. And so I would like to nominate Shanley to serve as the board president. One of the biggest things about being a board president, there's not a whole lot of authority that comes with it, other than acting as the school board's spokesperson outside of school board meetings. Obviously, school board members can talk during school board meetings and talk any other time, but just try to have the board speak with one voice. And so part of the reason for the timing now is we've got so much going on, there's been so much work with the high school task force already, and that's been going on, but it's getting into a phase where it's much more public. And Shanley has two more years on the school board after next... And Shanley has two more years on the school board after next September. And so I thought it would be good for kind of continuity to have that and to have kind of Shanley taking the lead there. And then lastly, I'll just say, I think we've seen as board members over the last four months that Jane Lindeman is certainly the right person for the job of superintendent. And so I think we all feel that we're in very good hands and think that there are many brighter days and greater things ahead for our school district. And so we're lucky to have you as our leader, and then I think it would work a lot with Shanley going forward. So this, again, it's all up to the board. I don't mean to, to assume too much, but I would, at the next board meeting, ask that there be an agenda item, or actually, probably several items, to be placed on the board agenda to take action on, to, to kind of go for the reorganization. But I started and will end with, I'm not resigning. I'm just thinking, kind of trying to think things through and allow for the most orderly transition. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. So I'll ask for that. Our next board meeting with that is in two weeks. So it is November tenth at six PM here in the boardroom, and so I will ask for that item to be on the agenda. Between now and November tenth, we will have at least two of the task force meetings on Thursday, November sixth, and then Saturday, November eighth. So I'd encourage everybody to try to attend one of those meeting dates. If there's nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And the chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you.